I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 15th, 2015 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Rogers, would you please take the role?
Here.
Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Opened Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a special presentation tonight. Lori, are you? Tim will join me. As you know, we, Recreation Department, under Lori's leadership, but Tim does all the work, puts on a race series, and it's a longstanding race series, and I believe it's a high-quality one, and it's got a great reputation in the region. And at the end of the year, it's become a tradition to recognize the champions from the race series. Based on individuals' participation, they get some award points for participating in an event, and then based on where they end up in the rankings, they get some additional, and then if they're an overall winner, they get some more as well. So the more participation, the higher participation, the more the points, and for each age group, we want to recognize them, and they are here tonight. But if you're, just to remind people, because there's a couple of new ones, we've got, I believe, six different events now in the race series. We've always had the half marathon, 10K and 5K as an event. Then there's the duathlon. We've got the triathlon. This year was new with a kids' triathlon. It was a great event, and that was new this year again. The Papillion Twilight Criterion, which is the biking event around City Hall and the old neighborhood. And then also new this year is a 10K and 5K Twilight Dash out at Sumter. It kind of wraps up the season. Sumter's wrapped up its season. All the race series are done, so kind of bring everybody out for a celebration out at Sumter, and that's the last one. We've had over 1,600 participants this year. More than 10% of those come from outside the state of Nebraska, representing about 19 different states, and that's, we always have that high participation outside the states, and drives a lot of tourism. Talked to a lot of the race participants that come from outside the state, and they purposely travel here for these events. And then the other 90% are from Nebraska, and Tim believes probably about 80-plus different towns in Nebraska are represented. So again, it's eight hours across Nebraska, so some of that's tourism as well. So out-of-state tourism, in-state tourism, and a lot for local Papillion folks, and a lot about wellness. So, Tim and Lori, just thank you for putting on a great program. Tonight's not about the sponsors, but we could not do it without the sponsors, so a huge thanks to them, and we'll recognize them later. But anyway, what we want to do tonight is recognize the 2015 champions. Are they all here? Wonderful. Youth age group 10 and under, Savannah Smedra from Papillion, and she participated in two events. She ran the 5K course in the half marathon. She also did the 5K course in the Twilight Dash and got third place. So Savannah? Youth age group 11 to 14, oh, and I don't, I think I mentioned, Savannah's from Papillion. Youth age group 11 to 14, Gus Kriegler. Gus is also from Papillion, and this is his third overall title. He also won this in 2013 and 2014, so I think we'll see him for a few more years. He did the 10K course in the half marathon and got first place, and then he did the 5K course in the Twilight Dash and got third place. So Gus. (APPLAUSE). Again, both of the youth were from Papillion. The youth, young adult, age group 15 to 19, Natalie Strawhecker. Natalie's from Omaha, completed the half marathon and was first place in her age group for the half, and then did the duathlon and was first place in hers as well. Natalie. Then of all of the events, the overall female winner, Judy Greenhagen. Judy's of Omaha. She did the 10K course in the half marathon, was second place in her age group. Then she did the duathlon, was first place. She participated in the mayor's triathlon, and then she also completed the 10K course in the Twilight Dash and won first place. So Judy, congratulations. I think every event for all of the years, you always see Judy there, so thanks for supporting us. And the overall male, Rich Keber. Important thing about this, Rich is here and he's from Columbus, so not only does he travel in for our events, he traveled in for the recognition, so we really appreciate his support. He completed the half marathon. He completed the duathlon, was third place. He completed the triathlon, and in the 10K course and the Twilight Dash, he was first place. So Rich? And we couldn't do it without, I mentioned the sponsors, but also the volunteers. This takes a lot of staff time, but we also have 250 community volunteers that come out, and a lot of those are from the sponsors. So not only are they given money, they're giving time as well, and then a lot of civic organizations, so very high-quality event. Thank the volunteers, thank Lori, especially thank Tim, but you all that participated, thank you also. Tim, you want to share anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
(LAUGHING). And the award winners, don't feel bad if you don't want to stay around. Thanks again, though. Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
It seems to be a habit when I begin to speak, people leave. I'm not sure if I should take that personally or not, but again, my report, Mr. Mayor, by updating council, and I mentioned a couple of times that Mayor Black and I are working very closely this year with Dr. Rickley, too. On learning community legislation, the school has shown a real interest and support in doing something that would address the boundary issue on a consistent basis. I anticipate there will be at least two bills that will be introduced, and our hope is that it's something that not only the school district, but the city of Papillion and potentially other cities can get behind. It'll allow us to at least finally address that issue in some manner. I'm not sure if you were notified, if you weren't, there's a promotional ceremony for the five promotions at the PD this Thursday evening from 5:00 to 7:00, chief? You know, open house type? Is there a specific time for your?
6 o'clock is when we're going to swear.
Yeah, there'll be a swearing in at 6 o'clock, so as council members, if you're interested, and you're certainly invited to attend that. If you also weren't aware, that this is the last meeting of 2015. There's actually three weeks in between council meetings, between this one and the next one. So with that, you frequently, as council members, make a habit, whether it's in this form or throughout the days and weeks and months that go out through the year, express support for us, but behalf of our staff, we just like to express appreciation for your support. It's really a good place to work, and we place high value in the trust that you have in us, and appreciate everything you've done to help us make this a better city. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Klug. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, I would ask that item C-11 be removed from the consent agenda, please.
C-11 is polled. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Do we have any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C-11. Ms. Klug.
Seven yeas, one abstain from Councilmember Mumgarth.
Motion passes. Next is item C-11, Resolution R150208, a resolution to renew the Metro Drug Task Force Interlocal Agreement with Douglas and Sarpy Counties, the cities of Bellevue, Omaha, and La Vista, the Nebraska State Patrol, the United States Department of Treasury, Internal Revenue Service, and the United States Department of Justice. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150208? Motion by Councilman Stube. Seconded by Councilman Glover. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, my employment with the city of Omaha requires that I abstain from this, though.
Okay. And I believe on our abstentions, we do need an approval of that. Yeah, we do. So please vote on Mr. Mumgarth's abstention.
(LAUGHING). Well, I'll make some votes. Just don't vote.
Six yeas, zero neas.
You're abstained. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Do we have any council discussion on the item? Please vote.
Six yeas, Councilmember Mumgarth abstains.
Motion passes. Next is item D-1, Ordinance 1724, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as that part of the north half of the southeast quarter, of the south half of the northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 24, Township 14 North, Range 12 East, and that part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 13 East, all of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northeast of 66th and Harvest Drive, from Agricultural AG to Single Family Residential Medium Density R2, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Jaworski. Item E-1, Ordinance 1730, an ordinance to amend in its entirety Chapter 81 alcoholic beverages of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the hours of the sale of alcoholic beverages, to repeal such section as heretofore existed and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and do we have proponents? Anybody that want to speak in favor?
Yes.
And if you'd state your name for the record.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Crystal Warren. I am a resident of Papillion and a manager at Jersey Sports Bar and Grill. We're located at 501 Olson Drive in Papillion. At this time, I have some items and points I'd like to share on the matter, unless anybody has any questions before I start. Okay. If any of you were able to follow the interviews recently that were in the past couple of weeks with the newspaper and the news, you would have found that the message on this I was trying to convey was simply about convenience. Convenience to Papillion residents, as well as the consumers that visit our city. Allowing the times of hard alcohol sales to be consistent on a daily basis, as well as consistent with our neighboring cities. It's about providing ease to any resident or consumer in Papillion who would find a need for such. This is not a call to ask people to drink more, or to drink earlier, or to even drink at all. This is being brought before you as an effort to keep relevant with the times and to keep our city growing in a business savvy direction. I've spoken with many local businesses about the issue, and they have all shared the same conclusion. It just makes sense, and it would be considered a profitable business opportunity. Speaking of behalf on restaurants, it would be beneficial to have liquor sales option available when we open our doors for a restaurant at 11:00 on Sundays. With the popularity of brunch and Bloody Marys on the rise, we would appreciate being able to offer our full bar menu to our customers if they so choose to partake in that. We do not plan to open our restaurant any earlier if there were a change to this ordinance, because again, it's just about convenience to our patrons and trying to keep their business instead of losing it because of the one hour where we are unable to provide what they wanted. There also may be other local businesses or restaurants who might even be interested in Sunday breakfast options if the ordinance is changed. This is something that will open additional doors in revenue and foot traffic. Again, this is if it's something that they interest them. I also would like to take a note on our lovely golf courses. There's Tara and Eagle. We could also have them benefit from this ordinance. Many shotgun starts happen as early as sunrise, and many outings happen prior to the noon hour. For some, beer and wine might not be their alcoholic drink of choice, but on a Sunday before noon, it would be their only choice if they wanted to partake in spirits. It seems unfair if a person were to book a tee time on a Saturday versus a Sunday before noon, that they would be limited on their drink options because the ordinance that is currently in place. The golf course is supposed to be a place for relaxation and recreation. As a city, we should want our golf courses to provide all the amenities our neighboring golf courses provide, because when we get right back down to it, it will provide convenience to the consumer and a profit for the city. In connection with our city's grocery and convenience stores, I believe changing this ordinance would affect them the most. Why would we want our residents to have to shop in a neighboring city Sunday morning just because their basket contained a hard liquor bottle? They could be trying to purchase multiple items for an event they are later attending in that day, or even for a road trip they're planning to leave on. I personally only like to make one trip to the store, and I like it to be close to my home, and I don't want to have to venture out for that item if I needed that if it was a Sunday. And if our neighbors, neighboring grocery stores are able to sell the liquor before noon, why can't Papillion? It's already available elsewhere to those who seek it before noon and on Sunday. I strongly believe changing the ordinance will not cause anyone to drink anymore earlier because it is presently obtainable just down the road. Again, our business and city tax dollars will profit from this, and this will be a profit that comes from providing solely convenience to our local residents and businesses. In conclusion, I thank you for your consideration in this matter, and I hope that we can find a way to change this ordinance that is outdated and in need of change. I'm also happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Anybody that wants to speak in favor? And if you'd state your name for the record.
I'm Lori Dilly. I'm the Wine and Spirits Manager at Hy-Vee in Shadow Lake. I'm not on the restaurant side, but on the retail side, we have a lot of unhappy customers that would like this ordinance changed. They're trying to do all their shopping at one time, and they come through, and they're very unhappy with the fact that we have to turn them away because they can't buy whatever they need for that day, later in the day, or later in the week. And we, too, feel it's unfair that we don't have the equal opportunity for sales, and would like to see that changed.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. The vote on this will be at the next council meeting. Item F-1, Resolution R150192, a public hearing and a vote. This is a resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for Folong LLC, doing business as Wild Rice Sushi and Japanese Grill, 248 Olson Drive, Suite 101, and a manager application for Rui Zhang, and I believe the applicant is here. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and call for proponents, and if you'd state your name for the record.
We're proponents. You said opponents?
Proponents.
Okay.
Good evening. Joel Carney, and I'm here as attorney for the LLC, the applicant, tonight, and the application really speaks for itself, but I guess I can say generally, this is an Asian fusion restaurant that is going in near the Shadow Lake Town Center. The address is 248 Olson Drive, and we're seeking a Class I liquor license, and it's about a 2,500 square foot building. There has been a similar license granted to the Spin Neapolitan Pizzeria, not in the recent past. We're here to answer any other questions you might have, and we're seeking approval tonight and a vote at the council. Thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay. You've got me puzzled. You used the term, "it's an Asian fusion restaurant." Would you define that for me, please?
My client could probably do a better job, but sushi, and Japanese grill, but I'll let Lisa Zhang, the applicant, be the manager.
This is your opportunity to do the commercial. Tell me what that is.
Hi. It's mainly sushi, but we'll be serving some Chinese and Thai food, so.
What makes it the fusion part?
Fusion, just Asian fusion, Chinese, Thai, and sushi.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess generally fusion, in my understanding, is bringing a few different types together, so.
Any other council comments or questions? Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150192?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Seconded by Councilman Stube. Any other council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. You're taking the bay right next to Spin Pizza, right?
Right.
So it's up at Midland's Place at 84th and 370. So welcome to the community. Look forward to it. Item F-2, Resolution R150202, a resolution to approve Patrick Drytek, probably got the name wrong, as the manager of STL of Nebraska Incorporated, doing business as Target Store T-05323, 718 North Washington Street, for their Class DK liquor license. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150202?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Seconded by Councilman Florence. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero neas.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item F-3, Resolution R150203, a resolution to approve Steve Roker as the manager for Walgreens Corporation, doing business as Walgreens Number 11355, 9512 South, 91st Plaza, and Walgreens Number 11356, 11343 South 96, for their Class D liquor license. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150203?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Florence.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stube. Is the applicant here?
I'm representing.
Okay. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero neas.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F-4, Resolution R150206, a resolution to approve the following 2016 trash hauling applications. And if it's okay with the council, the motion will be for all of them in one, but we can poll them if need be. Number one, Abe's Trash Service, Inc. Number two, Dale's Trash Service, Inc. Number three, Gretna Sanitation. Number four, Metro Disposal and Recycling, Inc. Number five, Papillion Sanitation. Number six, Premier Waste Solutions. Number seven, Waste Management of Nebraska. And number eight, Waste Services of Nebraska LLC. And city code does require that a representative be here, and I think they all are, but we can validate that if need be. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150206?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? I'm assuming all the applicants are proponents, but any others? Do we have any opponents? We do have a motion to, we'll need a motion to amend the resolution for a revised rate sheet for waste management that was at the, everybody was handed out. So do we have a motion to amend Resolution R150206 to include the revised rate sheet for waste management of Nebraska?
Sure.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion on the motion to amend? Please, Ms. Klug.
Thank you.
This is on the motion to amend?
I want to wait. I'm sorry.
Okay. Please vote on the motion to amend.
Seven yeas, zero neas.
Motion is amended. It's not council discussion. Ms. Klug.
Sorry. We do this every year, and I greatly appreciate the job that every one of our trash haulers does. We've been very fortunate in this city for many years that things have gone really right and have gone smoothly. I would like to be able to put a face with each hauler, and when you come up to introduce yourself, because that's what I'm going to ask you to do, just briefly give me like a one-minute to three-minute discussion on what it is that is helping your drivers to continue to be safe, that's keeping our residents safe on our street.
We'll just go down in the order, then. Abe's Trash Service.
One.
One minute, because three minutes would be a half hour on the topic.
(LAUGHING). Monte Christensen with Abe's Trash Service. We just appreciate the ability to come to your community and provide your residents and businesses with trash service. I think we, I think I can speak for all the trash haulers, that we appreciate the ability to do that. Our main thing is to keep the streets and everything safe. We do safety meetings for all of our drivers and everybody in our organization. We have drug testing for all of our drivers and the guys in the shop and stuff, so safety is a high priority for our organization, as well as what you guys are trying to do here as a city, too. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Mumgarth.
No.
I got one quick question. I'm going to have this for three of the haulers. We do have a city ordinance for that trucks can run from 6:00 AM to 6:30 PM, and on the applications, we have gotten some complaints in, and we had some with Abe's. You guys recognize that timeframe, don't you?
Yes, and I think there was a couple of things with our routing, but I believe that has been corrected.
Appreciate that. So, thank you. Number two, Dale's Trash Service.
Hi, Brian Christensen, on behalf of Dale's Trash. We're, I guess we should say that we feel very fortunate to be able to pick up trash here in the city of Papillion, and we do, same with Abe's, you know, we stress safety daily with our drivers. We try to remind them that there's kids, there's people all day long to be aware of all their surroundings, and, you know, we have the drug testing and weekly reminders of, you know, this is what we need to do to stay safe, you know, so we try to do the same.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gretna Sanitation.
My name is Mitch Harpenell. Our main concern always, we hold all of our drivers accountable for what they're doing. And fortunate for us, we have three drivers, so, and like I said, we keep them accountable. We do have safety meetings quite often, just so everybody's on the same page. They know better than to be ramrodding down these streets, so, because easily you guys can pull our permit to haul me, and we're, you know, with kids out, you know, especially Papillion coming in here, it's quite a busy town there, so, and, yeah, I mean, we have to do random UAs on the drivers every so often, so, and drug tests when they're hired, we do all that we have to do to make sure they're clear and good to go.
You guys recognize the 6:00 AM to 6:30?
Yeah, yeah. My drivers sometimes are, for some reason, very anxious they get out there and start picking up garbage, so.
All right. As long as you keep reminding them, appreciate it, because we do get the complaints, and they seem to be going up this year a little bit. Metro Disposal and Recycling.
Hi, my name's Scott Hubecks. I'm with Metro Disposal. We do the same thing. We have safety meetings on a monthly basis. We follow all the DOT guidelines with federal drug testing and everything, and we try and hire a workforce with experience. Most of our drivers have at least 15 years' experience driving trucks.
Thanks. Papillion Sanitation. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, well, Scott was up here, I was going to ask him the question, which I think everybody has to comply with, that commercial driver's license are a requirement for your large truck, so there are some additional things that you have to do just because of that. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Alex, I'm Shackleton. I'm with Papillion Sanitation. Safety, company-wide's, number-one value. That goes beyond even customer service for us. I know a lot of people were upset come Black Friday and that following Saturday, a lot of trash was still laying, because too icy to get down the streets, so it's an emphasis day in, day out. Every day, we have a meeting on safety. Every Friday, we have a very in-depth meeting on safety. At the end of the day, all we care about is everybody going home first, so.
You guys recognize that, 6:00 AM to 6:30?
We do.
Okay.
I've yet to have had one of those complaints, but I'll make sure that we are.
Okay. I mentioned we've had three companies that we've gotten complaints on this year, but we've addressed those, so I appreciate you guys looking after that for us. Premier.
I'm Tim with the Premier. We're a family-owned company. We're like the rest of the boys. We've, when it comes to safety, we do a weekly safety meeting with our drivers. When there has been an incident, which we all hate when it happens, we usually do a follow-up with all the drivers, and we'll do a three-week extent safety with them, talking to them every morning. We kind of do a tailgate meeting, describing the incident, asking the drivers, scenarios, what they went through, and usually the driver, whoever had the incident, we have them basically talk to other drivers, what they went through, why it happened. You know, we want to think as a company as a whole that it's preventable, you know, so we try to go to that standard. you know. So we try to go that standard. Doesn't always go that way. The time-wise, yeah, we do. I've actually backed my driver's start time up just to work with, because I do, I'm like you guys. We've got drivers, guess what? I've got guys that show up there at four thirty in the morning just to have coffee and, you know, but for the most part, we try to keep the standards high and go forward.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Waste Management.
Hi, my name's Frank Sherez. I'm route manager for Waste Management. Just like the rest of the companies that we have here, safety's number one priority for us. We have morning meetings every single day, weekly safety meetings where we have our drivers do quizzes about safety in certain topics, random drug screenings, keep them safe on the roads, protecting, you know, we all got families out there. So we have our route managers. We do monthly observations. If a driver was to have an incident, he's on a monthly basis observation. If he's clean, it's every ninety days. So we're constantly out there following our drivers, making sure they're doing the right thing, following the rules. We have life-critical rules for the drivers and for the public. Those are zero tolerance. If they're caught breaking those, it's pretty heavy disciplinary actions. So we're doing everything we can to keep everybody safe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Waste Services.
Waste Services called me earlier, and they are stuck in a snowstorm in Denver. And I think they have a contract with Waste Management for their trucks.
Okay.
For theirs.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Glover.
I have a quick question. Have all these haulers hauled for us in the past?
Yes.
Mr. Mungard.
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just have an observation, and since they're all here, I'll, I'll make that observation. The last time that I saw comparison information, it was, historically, it's been true, that the rate that Papillion residents pay for residential trash pickup has always been higher in Papillion than in neighboring cities. I think I know why that is. Efforts have been made over the years to examine that. I'm not going to bring it up at the moment. I just want to point out that, point out that observation since they're all here. If I'm incorrect on that, that residential waste collection here in Papillion is at least as inexpensive as it is in Ralston or other neighboring cities, please send me an email and correct me, because it's been on my observation over the years that that's not true. And I'll just point that out, and I hope that question continues to be asked every year, and so we can continue to serve the citizens of Papillion in ways that I think would benefit them.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. That is all of the regular agenda items. We've got committee reports, and I don't think any committees met. We do have comments from the floor, and so a couple of things. Haley, you came in. Come on up. One of the agenda items at the beginning was a presentation from Mayor's Youth Council, and Haley had a very good reason for being a little bit late, since we're on comments from the floor. Have you, don't worry about pulling up the PowerPoint if it's not loaded.
Okay.
Just give us a verbal update of what's been going on.
Well, we do the stuff every year that we've been doing, the Easter egg hunt and everything. But one thing that I really, really wanted to talk to you guys about was our recruiting right now. We've really been wanting to get, we, starting in October, we went through and we got all the old members off the council that haven't been doing what they've said they wanted to. And we sent them letters and said, you know, if you want to be on the council still, you have to show up for these meetings, and you have to show up for the stuff that you said you were going to. And if you don't want to do that, then you can leave the council. And so we sent out those letters, and people said that they didn't want to be on it anymore. And so we started a new recruitment process, and we have over forty-five new members now. This whole seat is filled up with a bunch of kids now, and I have all of their numbers, and I text them all the time, and I tell them what's going on, and they're all so interested. We have committee chairs standing up for things that are down on the lower council, and usually they don't say anything. And so all these students, we have kids from St. Columcille, and we have more from Papio, and they're seventh graders, and they're not seniors in high school that are going to be here for one year. And so the council is looking very promising, and it's just exciting to be a part of that. It's, it gets a little hectic at meetings when we're introducing new members, but we do, it's amazing. So when we were at Winter Wonderland, we had probably twenty kids there scooping popcorn, and that's all we were doing. But we had a system going, and with all those new members, it was a lot of, it was really great. And so we have to thank Officer Taggett for getting us all of those members signed up from the junior highs and all the people who have been helping us out. And so I'm really sorry I wasn't here on time.
Don't worry about it.
So that was our main big thing. And we have a holiday coat drive coming up on January ninth, and we're going to do coats for canes, so we're going to give them candy canes when they give us their coat. Last year, we did it, and we got about a hundred coats. We filled up Officer Taggett's big truck. And so this year, he said it went out in the water bill, and so we're hoping to get even more.
Wonderful. Any council, any council questions? Appreciate it. Thanks for your leadership. Any other comments from the floor? We've got some students here. You guys got to come up and introduce yourself. Every one of you. Your name and what brings you here?
I'm Isaac Simpson, and I'm here for AP Government. We have to have a government meeting, visit, so.
Who's your teacher?
Mr. Wagonish.
Okay.
I'm Tori Legere, and I'm also here for AP Gov.
I'm Quinda Groot, and I'm here for AP Gov as well with Wagonish.
I'm Stephanie DeShell, and I'm the same thing as them, AP Gov.
I'm Alexis Fields. I was just doing homework with them earlier, so.
Thank you all. Any other comments from the floor? Do you have any council comments? Mr. Ingberg.
Since Mr. Hoynes was so gracious in his remarks earlier, since this is the last meeting of the year, I just wanted to take a moment to thank and show my appreciation for all the department heads that are here tonight, all their staffs, administration, police, fire, parks, financial, everybody. Sometimes we, not just as a council, but as a community, take what they do for granted, and we take for granted what their employees do, and their litigation portion of the city as well. I'm sorry, Carla. And if you want to do something interesting, we just recently, I think everybody did, got their new property tax statements in the mail in the last day or two. If you want to do an interesting process, take what your property tax is to the city, divide it by twelve, and see what it actually costs you for the services of the second-ranked city in, in the United States. I think you'll be shocked to find out what a bargain it is. I think in my case, I did it quickly. Hope I didn't mess it up, but I think it was like under thirty dollars a month for police, fire, recreation, financial, administration, litigation department, everything that we have. You can't buy a bag of groceries for that. So I wanted to thank everyone for all of their hard work and what a great job they do for us on a daily basis, and we certainly don't take you for granted.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Mr. Hoynes and I met with Mayor Sanders and Administrator Berlowitz from Bellevue, along with Senator Sue Crawford, talking about the learning community that Mr. Mr. Hoynes updated on. Then Mr. Hoynes, Ms. Myers, Mr. Sturzma, I think a couple of others. We met with property owner on, one of the major property owners on one hundred and fourteenth corridor about a potential project. And then Mr. Hoynes, Ms. Myers, Mr. Sturzma, and myself met with Andrew Rainbolt from Sarpy County Economic Development. They've really ramped up their level of support in Sarpy County from Economic Development Corporation perspective. Andrew's new on there. They brought another assistant on. They're now bringing a person on for business recruitment and retention. So we're getting a lot more attention from that organization than we probably have in a number of years. So we appreciate that, and what we were talking about is some of the new things they're doing, and how we can plug into that and take advantage of that. And then Chief Lyons and myself, yesterday, we're at Prairie Queen Elementary for the first of the Dare graduations. I think everybody should have gotten an email with those schedules. Those are great events for the sixth graders. And then a number of us attended volunteer recognition at the library as well. A lot of volunteers over at the library make that operation occur, so a big thanks to them. Mr. Hoynes mentioned one of them, but this is actually a busy week. The next four nights, there's something going on. So just for your schedule, tomorrow, Wednesday at four P.M. is a ribbon cutting at U.S. Cellular at Market Point with the Chamber. Thursday night is the promotion ceremony at the Police Department for the lieutenants and the sergeants. And that open house is five to seven, and the ceremony's at six. Friday, the eighteenth, is a Dare graduation at Carriage Hill at eight in the morning. And Saturday, the nineteenth, at two o'clock, the Sarpy Historical Museum has their Smithsonian exhibit, Smithsonian exhibit. And the portion on Saturday is actually a walking tour downtown Papillion. And so come out to that. That's going to be starting at the library at two o'clock. I think that's it. Any other council comments? It is the last one of the year, so Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year. Thanks, everybody, for everything. We should vote to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Glover, do we have a second? Ms. Klug, please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.